Okay, City Commission meeting for June 3rd will come to order, please. Rick, could you get the doors? Thank you. Roll call, City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Mr. Gault.
Present.
Mr. Rhodes.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kahler.
Tonight, John Perkins has honored us with an invocation. Thank you, John. And then our pledge of allegiance tonight will be Palmer Stroop. He's a sophomore at Paducah Tillman High School.
Let's pray. Oh, Holy Father in heaven, I pray that you'll watch over this meeting tonight and give us the wisdom that we surely lack. I pray, Father, that you'll guide us in the ways only you know how to guide us. I pray, Lord, that you'll show us ways to be kind to each other, and often, Lord, we fail you. I pray that you'll forgive us where we mess up. In your show's holy name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Palmer, and thank you, John. Are there any additions or deletions, City Manager?
There are none.
We'll go into our ordinance's adoption. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the metal base bid and alternate bid of YEC Incorporated for the Noble Park Lake Bank Stabilization Project, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract per se. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the metal base bid and alternate bid of YEC, Inc., in the amount of $192,414 for the Noble Park Lake Bank Stabilization Project, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract per se.
Any thoughts from anyone? We've discussed this. City Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kahler.
Aye. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed zone change for property located at 30025 Olivet Church Road, and amending the Paducah zoning ordinance so as to affect such rezoning. This ordinance is summarized as follows: Rezone property located at 3025 Olivet Church Road from R1 to Highway Business District, and amending the Paducah zoning ordinance to affect such rezoning.
Any discussion on this? City Clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kahler.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance extending the boundary of the City of Paducah, Kentucky by finalizing the annexation of certain properties lying adjacent to the corporate limits of the City of Paducah, and defining accurately the boundary of said property to be included within the said corporate limits. This ordinance is summarized as follows: Approving the final annexation of attractive property contiguous to the present city limits located at 3025 Olivet Church Road containing 4.946 acres.
Aye.
This was a voluntary annexation. They came to us, and we're always glad to welcome new folks into the City of Paducah.
Yes, we are.
Absolutely.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kahler.
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute Change Order Number One for reduction in the total contract price with A&amp;K Construction, Inc., for construction of the Tel-Tec Call Center. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The mayor is hereby authorized to execute Change Order Number One for a decrease in the amount of $41,275 with A&amp;K Construction, Inc., for changes associated with the exterior drive and parking areas, causing the final contract price to be reduced to $3,254,725.
City Clerk, please.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kahler.
We'll go into ordinance's introduction. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the execution of an online grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the United States Department of Justice for a 2014-2015 Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Accountability Grant through the U.S. Department of Justice to be used by the Paducah Police Department, and authorizes an interlocal agreement with the Fiscal Court of McCracken County. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The City of Paducah hereby approves the execution of an online grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the U.S. Department of Justice for a 2014-2015 Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Accountability Grant in the amount of $13,117 to be used by the Paducah Police Department to purchase mobile radios. No local match is required. Further, the City hereby approves the execution of an interlocal agreement between the city and county where the grant agreement approved.
Second.
Hi, Steve.
Good evening. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Pretty straightforward.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not vote on that tonight. It's an introduction. City Managers' Report.
Couple of major items I want to visit with you about tonight. One is City Hall. And then, secondly, we had our budget presentation last week, and I understand there's some interest in some changes to the draft before we put it in form for an ordinance reading next week, so I want to take some time for that as well. Got a PowerPoint presentation. Steve Doolittle is going to join me at the podium for this. I can't believe, shortly after I started three and a half years ago, I looked for a laser pointer up here for a presentation. I didn't find one, and I still haven't arranged to get one up here yet, so make the best do with what we have. Couple weeks ago, a presentation was made to you by BFW Engineers and Markham Engineering on the additional analysis of the City Hall building. And among other things, an assessment was done of the structure of the building with an emphasis on the overhang. Also covered that night was the condition of the major systems in the building, HVAC, lighting, what have you, as well as other important functional components of a building, ranging from space to security to customer accommodation, all of those kind of things. Some very preliminary figures were brought forward regarding potential costs of renovation of this building. And I believe that the City Commission felt moved by that presentation and expressed an eagerness to begin a process to determine pathway or pathways to move forward with this issue, given the very clear, I think, assessment and understanding that the functionality of this building was near or at the end in terms of its useful life. So what has occurred since that time, there've been obviously a lot of conversations, most of them informal, and hopefully the community is beginning a little bit of engagement on this matter of how we move forward. It is not a simple process to determine how to go about a major reinvestment in a City Hall, or for that matter, potentially investment in a new City Hall. It is the public's building. It is a building that needs to last for decades. Important considerations need to come into play with respect to location. I think that we all have some pretty strong ideas of how to improve functionality, either through a renovation or a new build. In other words, there's just a lot to think about. It's not a simple process, nor is it one that should either be lacking in public input, nor should it, for that matter, move at a snail's pace, because we have a situation here that is fairly imminent in terms of the need and also the usability of the structure that we're in right now, as you look outside and see entrance closed and access blocked off underneath the overhang. So we are in a, need to be in an action mode. Can I move around with the cursor on that thing? Or just a finger? Okay. All righty. If you take a look at the screen, we've identified a number of considerations that need to be taken into consideration in determining the process for moving forward with this. Perhaps a first step would be some process of confirming the need, and maybe we're already there, based on the information that was shared with you a couple of meetings ago. From that point in time, if the need is confirmed, then we move over and get into discussion along the issues of renovation or new build. And when we look at either one of those issues, we want to do so with respect to a number of potential outcomes of what would be a very major investment, either way we would go. Outcomes with respect to things I'd mentioned before, such as efficiencies, whether it's workflow efficiencies, energy efficiencies, what have you, customer accommodation, security, functionality, workflow functionality, and even cost. All those things are the things that you look for in a functional building, and when the decision is made to reinvest in this building, those are the outcomes that we would be looking for. So either in the renovation or in the new build mode, those are the things that need to be focused on. So if we go over to the left, we point out the importance of some level of citizen engagement throughout this process, maybe at the very beginning stage and continuing throughout, or at various stages along the way. Things that we think lend themselves very readily to citizen engagement and involvement would be factors, I keep losing this cursor, such as location, perhaps even in a design, whether it's a redesign of a current building, a revised design, or a new location design, some process of some design charrettes involving public input that impact those measures that I talked about over on the right earlier. That could also come into play in the formal process of A&E or design. So those are important components of this whole thing. We also think that one way to do that, maybe not entirely, but at least partially accomplish citizen engagement in this process, is a formation of some kind of a task force, or it's really not the word I want to use, we'll talk about this a little more, some kind of a work group that could maybe lead in this, or provide information and recommendations ultimately to the City Commission, recognizing that the City Commission is in the decision-making mode and would be for several steps along the way. So some sort of a working group that would include some level of expertise, some ability to reflect the values of the community, as well as some resources in that group to manage the project forward. Okay. How do we move down, one at a time on this? Just another enter, click down. For lack of a more creative name for this endeavor, and this can certainly be improved upon, but for tonight's purposes, let's call it City Hall 2050. And there is some significance to that, the most readily discernible one perhaps, as well, we think it needs to last to 2050. Well, we certainly do, and perhaps beyond. But as we visited at the management level about what more meaning there is to that, we hit upon the likelihood that there will be a lot of changes take place in city government's relationship, maybe more so physical, with its citizens and customers going forward that could impact a lot of design issues, a lot of spatial issues, maybe even total space issues for a City Hall as we advance further into the electronic age. We don't know what all those might be, but it pays to think ahead intelligently on that, and not just deduce to designing a City Hall for today, but in fact, trying to design one for decades down the road. So working group is maybe a better term for tonight, for the sort of formal group that might be formed to help guide and produce information and recommendations for this process going forward. Recognizing that a primary purpose of that group would also be to implement a comprehensive system of citizen engagement along the way, to make sure that community values and judgments are infused into the project and into project recommendations, and ultimately, the decisions that you make. So again, that group would craft position statements, make recommendations to the City Commission. So how might the process actually proceed? Many of you that took computer science back when I did, a long time ago, worked with flow charts, these things are called other things in the management world, critical path or PERT charts, whatever you want to call them, but it's potential pathways to follow, again, being distinguished by decision-making points along the way. And touched on a lot of this before, but it's important to take a look at this for how some of these pathways vary, especially between the build new and the renovate and keep. For example, if a decision was made based probably in part on the determination by the community that this building needed to be preserved for whatever reasons, a key decision from there would be, okay, we're going to proceed to renovate the existing building. How much preservation are we going to require? And I bring that up because it has been pointed out to you how much of the interior space of this building is not utilized and could be, and could be utilized and converted to achieve gains in the outcome areas that we talked about earlier, such as better workflow, better customer accommodation, security, and all those kind of things. So you potentially have trade-offs, and those trade-offs become value judgments, and it's when you get into value judgments that more participation in the decision-making process becomes important. We've already identified on a rehab that there are a couple of standards structural to look at. One would be to rehab the building, maintaining its current nonessential facility structural standard, another being to convert it to an essential structural standard, i.e. survive a more severe weather event. It's not uncommon for City Halls to have that. It's probably more common where there are some sort of public safety facilities involved. Example of what might play into that decision, if we were ever to decide to bring a 911 center or operation into City Hall, then it would only make sense to construct this facility at the essential level to make sure that all the protection against a weather event that's possible could be built in. When you get into a decision to build new, again, you would still have the essential and nonessential decision to make, and as was pointed out by the consultants last meeting, that impacts the cost fairly significantly. But we would get in very quickly to the location decision, and that's, we need to be careful not to oversimplify the significance of thinking that over pretty good, because it's a decision that needs to last for a half a century or more. Lot of considerations around that, I mean, the list is very, very long, access being one of the main ones, maybe association with like governmental facilities being another one, which we have right now. Interestingly enough, just to give you another one that's maybe a little out there, when the fire and police chiefs and I traveled to look at a couple of police and fire joint builds in Florida, we found that, I believe, in both instances, that the decision was made to build both those facilities in an area of the community that needed to be redeveloped. And it was believed that that public investment in those facilities in that part of the community would stimulate additional private development, and there were indications that in fact, that did happen there. So it's a big decision to make. So as you move down the list, for a new build, you get into essentially design decisions, you get into the hiring of a A&E firm at some point in time to complete the design and prepare bids and solicit the construction contract and what have you, and then you take it all the way down through occupancy. You know, by the way, we see over there that inherent in that decision-making process at some point before we've committed ourselves is a determination of the financing means that we would use or have to have available for the project. So it's a big decision, important decision for the community, it's an lasting decision. I think it begs for inclusiveness, but yet, at the same time, it needs to be guided and kept moving forward. The City needs to, like we have with the PRDA review of the Riverfront project, make available and provide technical expertise that we have along the way, or expertise through the consulting world when it's needed as well. It may be that there's more information needed before the decision on build new or remodel can be made, for example. So those are the thoughts that we have. Not asking you to necessarily adopt this tonight, not asking you to make a decision on the idea of the working group or the composition of it. Like to get some feedback from you, Mayor Kahler and I would, over the next two or three weeks, if this makes sense to you. Certainly, there are other ways to do it, but I believe that, again, that there's an opportunity, or there are opportunities here for some civic engagement, not to minimize the importance, again, of moving forward, because we have functional issues here right now, and we have a portion of the building that's not usable, we've got a portion of the building that's not accessible as it was designed to be. So we have some real issues, I think, that are motivating us to move forward. So, Steve, did I miss anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Yes, if you have any comments or questions, we'd be...
Well, I think the process, starting where we are right now, obviously, the building has issues, so where do we go from here? And I thought it was very insightful moving forward to make sure that we're thinking ahead. You mentioned the technology side of it. We have space here that we're not using to make this, whatever decision we make, whether we build new or remodel, thinking with that vision and getting input from a think tank, if you will, covering, trying to cover all of that, coming up with a final plan, which way we're going to go. So I think this is, this process is appropriate, and between now and when we come back and make a decision on where we want to go, would be thoroughly gone through and maybe a couple of times to make sure. Ultimately, we're going to have to make a decision, so the process is, let's try to figure out what we need, where we're going, and get input from the citizen, because you're right, it's City Hall, it's their building. So I think this is the perfect way to start it.
Jeff, what kind of timeline would you be looking at to do this?
Oh, I think it'd be great to get this group, if this is the way we go, impaneled, certainly within the next, you know, three weeks or a month, for sure. Get them moving, provide them some direction. You know, we can be thinking ahead of that time of, you know, some of the process that we would guide them to follow with.
What about for completion of the study?
Well, what we know from the A&E is that, actually, most of the discussion, most of the information presented to us was on a renovation, but it was a major renovation. And I believe the architect said that a renovation on the level of what the study recommended needed to be done was going to take nine months just to do the design on that. So I'm believing that a new design for a new building would probably take about the same amount of time.
I mean, what about just to determine what direction we're going to go with a new building? Are you talking about going ahead and designing that to see?
No, I think that decision probably has to be made first. There probably has to be a little discussion around, the biggest issue on new or renovate, it seems to me, or one of them, is, okay, as I mentioned before, what degree of renovation? If we hollow this out completely, then you can do a lot of redesign and get a lot of gain in a lot of the functional areas. If we work within the parameters of the existing design, then not so much so. And so you start to associate numbers with that, and quite frankly, I think that the numbers that we got from the consultant on the renovation was upgrade of all major systems, but not a whole lot of structural, spatial redesign. So it kind of becomes a little bit of a bang-for-the-buck thing, and I think that ultimately, that's a lot of where that decision needs to reside, is, okay, and, you know, somewhat influenced by the value, perceived value of preserving this building as it is. Having said that, this building was not particularly functional for the last 50 years, and, you know, to believe it would be functional going forward into the unknown is very short-sighted. So I would hope that at the end of the day, that functionality is a primary value that's applied to the decision here of renovate or build new. But again, I'm probably getting out a little ahead of the process when I say that. Any thoughts on timeline?
I think this, you know, this upper piece here between selecting a working group and working down through the decision of, are we favoring a build new or renovate? I think you could realistically spend six months very, very easily, as we saw when we went through the details of the Riverfront, which I think this is a level of degree more difficult. And so you'll do that, and then you'll have that nine months of design work, and then probably you're looking at at least a year of build for a facility. Whether you're renovating or building new, you're probably looking at roughly the same number of months involved. So from today going forward, a year and a half to two years, the total process.
I mean, it's a big, very important decision. It's a very large expenditure. I think that we need the public input, and we need to really look at all options. We didn't look at a new building last time, you know, building somewhere else, or we just looked at renovation of this one.
I think mainly what they're wanting to glean from this is, do we want to renovate? Do we want to build? Then, once you make that decision, then you're going to have to go through the process of where do we build, picking some sites, and what do you want to build? So I think two years is a good, year and a half to two years.
But for now, you really just want our input on the process of determining if we're going to build or renovate, and it looks like you want public input. We want to look at all options.
Yeah, and my gut tells me there's maybe a little bit more information that we'd like a consultant to generate for us. I mean, I would hope six months would be the top end of that. I would hope maybe we... I would hope maybe we could do it in a little less, but it is the key decision going forward. There's no question about it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, at least by the end of the year.
I hope all of you all, when you're out, are asking people their thoughts on the city hall. It's a good thing to do, because a lot of times people won't come to you and say, I want to tell you what I think, so just ask them. What do you think about city hall?
I have done that, and it's interesting.
It is, yeah.
I mean, just, I don't have to ask most of the time.
But you know, the people that are giving you that may not be thinking about all of the options that we could be just looking to. So, because I've kind of floated a couple ideas, well, you know, I know you're saying that, but what about this? So I just think it'd be great to get public input.
Last thing we'd want to do is get a few steps down the road and have to catch up with the process that we could have put in place earlier.
Right.
So I want to thank Rick and John Perkins, and especially Steve Doolittle, for collaborating and putting this together. Not that it's that brilliant or anything, but I think it represents, I think, our collective experience with what a process is going to look like and how to set it up, we think, correctly from the very beginning, so we have the best degree of ensuring a smooth flow going forward. There's a lot of decision points along the way, and they're all very big decisions for all of you. And you're going to want the community, you're going to want to know the community's pulse as best you can as you proceed through that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, and everybody involved.
Okay, the second thing, I apologize, I, you know, it's great to get the agenda together Friday. I did not put an item on here for continued discussion about the budget. As you know, we did have the budget presentation last week and indicated that on the 10th, which is next Tuesday, we'd have first reading on the ordinance. And typically, we've tried to have any commission changes identified before the reading of that ordinance. Now, that's not to say that we couldn't have them at that time. It's just that we'd have to step back in the ordinance reading process and so on and so forth. So I understand there are some thoughts, Mayor Kayler, that are there tonight for some potential changes to this. So if there's an opportunity to hear from the commission tonight on any changes that you want to make, that would give us the ability to incorporate those into the ordinance before it's presented to you next Tuesday night.
I think, just from some feedback that I've gotten, that we all feel that one of the best ways to market downtown, to increase traffic downtown to our local restaurants, to our businesses, is the marketing of all of our special places downtown, the Carson Center, the Market House Theater, Maiden Alley, because all of those venues drive those people to downtown. And so I feel like, and I've talked to several of you, that maybe we should contribute a little bit more money to those drivers for downtown Paducah. And so then you say, well, where does the money come from? Well, we did allocate $80,000 for the train. I think we could put $50,000 of that $80,000 into a project fund and put an additional $30,000 toward the arts consortium. And then we need to take another look at the train, and I've asked Commissioner Rhodes to work with the city manager and I on that, and looking with some other ways that we could possibly restore the train. So.
I would just...
Want your all's input on that?
I'll just echo. I do, would like to see some more money put in that. And I think that it goes beyond just bringing people downtown, because two, three weeks ago, we had 1,800 people downtown for a performance. They weren't all from Paducah, and they were spending the night elsewhere. There were only two restaurants open downtown, so they were eating. So it will not only bring people downtown, but it will bring people to Paducah.
Economic driver.
I think Jeff Speck, I think, how about quitting, correct? Jeff Speck, who wrote Walkable City, who will be here in August, you know, he talks about that your downtown is everybody's downtown, that whether you live in the farthest remotes of McCracken County, or if you live on Third Street, everybody talks about their downtown. So it's not just about, you know, just the business of downtown. To me, it's about that thing, when people come to visit, they say, and very, let's go downtown. Let us show you our downtown. And again, if you're the farthest reaches of the Raglan community, you talk the case about going downtown. That's my downtown.
I think we did an ad about that last year, didn't we?
I believe I saw you in the ad.
So that'll take it from 125 to 155, correct? And you think that we'll need all 50,000, Alan, to do the train?
I don't know.
You think we can do it for less than that?
I sure think so.
But that would just be put in a project account. If we don't need it all, we can switch it to something else.
I understand. I want it done.
Oh, I know.
I just want it done as efficient as we can and pretty hands-on.
There's been talk about possibly detaching the back two cars. Would that then be available in that project fund? Would that be an option for expense associated with that if that decision was made?
Depends on how we handle that. You know, if we put it, if we sell it and say, owner, take it. I mean, there's different ways we can handle that. That's some of the things we need to discuss. You know, how do we handle those two cars if we just keep the steam engine and the coal tender and the track?
Yeah, I just mentioned that because that might be, you know, if it costs, spend 20,000 painting it or something, and it...
Have to remove those cars.
...some money to, decisions made to go down to just the two, and it costs some money to move the other ones on, then could that be used for that? I would assume that it could, if that's part of the overall project decision.
Any discussion?
Well, as far as the arts, when it's Market House, Yizer, you know, I ECO, you guys are right. I mean, that's the catalyst for drawing people to what I always say is the best melon corner in the city, which is right there between Yizer and Dozy Place. I mean, so this past weekend, there was, goodness gracious, there were so many people downtown, there were so many events going on, and a lot of those folks, after the event, stayed down here and participated in everything we had to offer. So I think the funds are justified. And these groups are very, they're very functional. The boards, the folks that are on those boards, they are very, they're very responsible. They work extremely hard. They understand the process. For instance, Market House, they've had a plan, and I'm just mentioning Market House. The others are just as well engaged, but put a plan together to broaden their space. They've been very responsible in taking the initiative in doing that, which makes decisions like this not too hard to make.
Well, and the arts define Paducah, especially with the designation as a creative city, a folk art and crafts. So, and I like what Commissioner Wilson said, because it's not just about downtown. It's about what it does for the whole community, for everyone.
It certainly defines our community, absolutely. And the reason I was asking the question about the train, I mean, I got worked up last week because there wasn't even, Jeff knows this, there wasn't anything in the budget over city hall, but their request was like for 195, and if we could, I mean, find it, find it.
Well, for full disclosure, I serve as a volunteer on some of these boards, so I do know how hard they work themselves to raise their own funds. I mean, they apply for grants all over. They have, just about every weekend, one of these groups or some of the others will be having a fundraiser in Paducah of some kind. So I know that they're working hard themselves to be self-sustaining as much as they can, but they really appreciate our support.
I want to mention with respect to what Commissioner Gault recalled from last week, just so it's reiterated, I think, for your information primarily, but I did mention last week that there was money in the general fund reserve that is not recommended to be appropriated, that exceeds the recommended balance that we, in effect, have left there with the idea that it would be available for the architect and engineering design for this building. We could just as well appropriate that into a project fund, but there's really no need to. If you trust us not to spend it for something else, that doesn't sound right. But clearly, that decision was made consciously by John and I to hold that money back. So please store that in your memory, that as part of the reserve balance of the general fund, that we have some $700,000 or $800,000 held back to be appropriated for that purpose as we move along.
It's okay. We now have you on tape. You don't have to put it in a project fund.
That's right. We weren't on tape last week.
We had, I just want everyone to know that we have 800 Methodist in Paducah over the weekend for the Methodist Conference. It's good to have those folks...
They're still here.
...spending money with us and eating at the restaurants, staying in the motels, enjoying all the beautiful things that Paducah has to offer. And they don't cause any problem. I don't think so. Well, they are Methodist. I mean, I'm a Methodist, right, Sandra?
Yes.
Are there any other suggestions for changes to the budget?
Sorry, I thought we were through.
Okay. I also have a request for an executive session for economic development purposes.
I wasn't through.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wasn't through either.
Oh, okay. I thought...
I wanted to talk about Dr. Green's reception, it was a lovely reception, for Dr. Green and his retirement. I told him I hoped he didn't retire from community life, just from the school system. He's done a great job. He's really moved the Paducah City school system forward. And I know that Donald Shavely will be a very good superintendent as well, so wish them good luck in their retirement.
It was a very nice dedication of the new Paducah Middle School.
Okay.
Well, city manager's comments precede mayor's comments.
I just thought you were through.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
And we have an executive session tonight, so who has that?
I do. I'm with the board going to close session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. A specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity is permitted by KRS 61.8101G.
Second.
City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler? Aye. And we will be coming back after the executive session.
I make a motion that we come out of executive session?
Into open session.
Into open session, out of executive session?
I need to make a second?
No, can Mr. Abraham do? Can we call the row?
Please.
Mr. Abraham? Open session?
Here? Aye. I am here.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Mr. Gault, I think you have the ordinance?
I do. An ordinance of the city of Paducah, Kentucky approving a memorandum of understanding among GPEDC, Inc., doing business under the assumed name of the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council, Inc., Paducah-McCracken County Industrial Development Authority, and Genova Productions, Inc., with respect to a public project authorizing the execution of the memorandum of understanding and other documents related thereto. This ordinance authorizes the city of Paducah, Kentucky, the city, to approve a memorandum of understanding between GPEDC, Inc., doing business under the assumed name of the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council, Inc., GPEDC, the Paducah-McCracken County Industrial Development Authority, IDA, and Genova Products, Inc., a Michigan corporation. Pursuant to the MOU, the GPEDC and IDA are to provide certain economic incentives to corporation in order to induce corporation to develop and induce a vinyl building product facility to a certain building located at 5400 Commerce Drive, Paducah, Kentucky, within the boundaries of the Paducah-McCracken County, Kentucky. The ordinance approves the form of the MOU presented to the Board of Commissioners of the city, with such changes therein as shall not be adverse to the city and may be approved by the mayor and city manager.
Second.
City Clerk?
We don't call the row tonight.
Oh, that's right. Just an introduction. All right. Thank you all. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.